Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite everyone to please silence your electronic devices for the meeting. If there's any students here that are here for government class to get some papers signed off, there's a line on there that says who's running the meeting. My name's Timothy Crumley. I'm the president of the Board of Education. I'm running the meeting. And at the end of the meeting, any one of the board members that's here can sign your piece of paper. So just come up to any one of us and we can sign that and you'll be all good to go for your class requirements. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the Smart School Bond application and we need to recess for that. Would somebody like to make a motion? Ellen would like to make a motion to recess for the public hearing. Would anyone like to second made by Mrs. Russo? Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. The Board and the public may recall that a few weeks back, we had a presentation from Ms. Gordon and Mr. Hayes about some of the work that we're proposing to be done using our smart remaining Smart Schools bond monies, primarily that is for emergency notification and other hardware and software throughout our schools. The Board, I believe there is an action item tonight to... Yes, to approve. It's actually an amendment to our Smart Bond Plan. You will see it in there from ECC Technologies among others. And that talks about some of the different work that's being done to really upgrade our facilities. So, that being said, this is a public hearing. Any member of the Board or the public who was in attendance can ask questions.
Any question? Oh, wait.
How long do you think this will take to be completed?
Project will have to move into design next, so that'll take approximately six months. And then, once the application is for funding, it takes about a year to get the funding approved, and then go to bid, and then construction. So, probably be about a two-year period.
I assume in that beginning process, knowing that it's a two-year window, there's allowances in there for equipment and things of that nature for the eventual increase of what it will be rather than what it is at the present moment?
Yes, sir. It's cost exploration.
The other questions regarding the Smart Bond amendment? All right. Motion to reconvene in the meeting made by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, for helping us out tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. A motion to adopt the agenda as is made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. Approval of draft minutes, May 17th, 2023. Motion by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Approval of draft minutes, May 23rd, 2023. Special meeting. Motion by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. This will be this year's last installment of the Student Board Member Update. If either of you would like to come to the next meeting, feel free. We'd love to have you. But by no sense should you feel obligated to do so. We know the end of June is extremely busy for you guys, graduation, just finishing up your final year of high school. So, who's doing it tonight? Mr. Feldman, go right ahead.
We had the Spring Dance Performance last Friday, the 25th. The senior trip, which included a dinner cruise in Philadelphia and Hershey Park, was yesterday and the day before. The first June Regents Exam was today with the U.S. History Regents. There will be an SAT exam offered Saturday, the 3rd. The Presidential Award Ceremony is June 6th. The Spring Sports Award Ceremony is June 7th, with the Modified One being at 1:30 and the Junior varsity and varsity at 5:30. Prom is June 8th at West Hills Country Club. District-wide art show is on Friday, June 9th. There will be an SAT exam offered Saturday, June 10th. The Blue and White Ceremony is Tuesday, June 13th. Last Night Concert is also June 13th. Senior Honors Night is Wednesday, June 21st. And on June 22nd, we will have our senior luncheon after graduation rehearsal where all the seniors will sign the class mural.
Thank you very much, Mr. Groden. In honor of your last meeting, the Board has got you guys a couple gifts for doing such a great job this year. So we've got you each a pen and pencil set that you can utilize in your future endeavors and take along your plaque. You can collect them along your way and all the way up to CEO. And you can start from the bottom and work your way up to the top. Mr. Groden's going to take a picture of us because our person's not here. No, you gotta stand up. Real quick, we'll do it real quick. You want to hold your thing so everybody knows you are? One, two. Gotcha. Thank you very much for all you guys did this year. Don't twist the pencil too hard. I think I might have broke yours already. No, I didn't. I couldn't figure out which one was pencil. But thank you very much for all you guys did this year and thank you so much. Moving on, we do not have any presentations this evening, which moves us on to the consent agenda. And I was a little lackadaisical in telling one of you guys that you were in charge of that. Has anybody got their stuff together? Mrs. Jersey, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to take the consent agenda as a group, E1 through F1.
F1 through? Well, good. Do I have a second on that? Made by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Mrs. Jersey. Moving on to information reports and discussions, Board Roundtable. This will be a little short this evening. We did have a few members that had personal applications to attend to. And we're going to start with Mr. Groden. Send the report. Mrs. Larusso?
I attended a Boy Scout trip, 2011, down to Boston for the three-year trail. Pretty awesome, a lot of rain, but always had fun. They learned some historical things. I also want to congratulate Eduardo, I think it's Ness? Yes. Who was crowned Section 9 Class B champion in the 800 meter this weekend. And congratulations to Evian Mitchell and Judea Brown, my brother's keeper. They're identified as leaders in the community. Pretty awesome. And congratulations to the girls' golf team, who just finished off a perfect season, 10-0. They're crowned champion divisions. And the Modified Four Ways had a nominal season. And I also like to bring up the Divvy Car Wash this weekend, the varsity ball for the football scene. I guess the whole entire football field.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Larusso. Mrs. Riley?
I attended a boys' modified baseball game here versus Tri Valley. It was neat. They were winning when I was watching. I've also gone, I saw Dr. Evans there as well, to the trap, and also Michael Feldman, at the Trap Skate Shooting Club Awards with Jay Mendel, his coach, and actually Michael. One was honored with the award. It's the, he got the coach award, so he got the grand award there. And so congratulations to Michael. And also, it's just such a great opportunity for kids to learn responsible use of gun and the camaraderie and the competitive nature of the, of the team is really, is really great to see. And also just how well Jay and the other coaches work hard to make it just a really great experience for kids. So I just want to put that out there. Also, I'm not sure if this was talked about the last meeting. It could have been, but when I also saw Dr. Evans at the, at the Mid Hudson Club Awards. School Study Council Award. Thank you. Never seemed to remember that. M-H-S-C? S-S-C? So, anyway, it was nice to go to that as well, to see our people from Monticello achieve awards and also the night itself was a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Rivera?
I went to the Spring Dance Performance. It was very nice. And the girls' modified game.
I attended the National Junior Honor Society Induction Ceremony at the middle school. It was put together very nicely. Thank you to the students for striving for that and the staff and administration for helping them get there. Because without them, they wouldn't be able to do it. And also to the students with the gumption to follow through with their educational goals. Besides that... Which been crazy. Anyway, which way? Number two on information reports and discussions, we have our principal reports. Any questions or comments around those principal reports?
I have a question. Not sure if it's a principal report or not. Do we know what our numbers are looking like for the pre-K next year?
I don't have those handy. I can look them up for you. Moving off of reports to correspondence outcomes, none at this time. There is a Policy Committee memo. Would you like to speak to that, Dr. Evans?
Absolutely. So the Board Policy Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 5th, at 5:00 p.m. here. Ms. Mason Greco chairs that committee. She wasn't able to be here tonight. And the Board will find in their Board Docs the agenda for that meeting. This extensive slate of new business comes to us as policy recommendations from the New York State School Boards Association. So some of those may, depending on how the committee finds them, they may be on the Board agenda for a first reading, possibly as early as the June 22nd meeting.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Capital Project update. Dr. Evans?
So I want to thank the Board who raised some questions at the last meeting regarding the tennis courts. So we dug a little bit deeper and found that the tennis courts were designed according to U.S. Tennis Association specs and that that's a recommendation by the New York State Athletic Association in terms of competitive play. So the design from CPL was consistent with that. However, the contractors did not drill or bore the net holes according to the design. So in other words, instead of being 12 feet of clearance from the, I'm going to call it an out-of-bounds line because I'm not that familiar with tennis. I know what it is. I just don't know what it's called. Between that and the fence, USTA recommends that be 12 feet. Instead, that was actually 9 feet. So four of the five courts are affected by this. However, it has been caught early enough where those holes, we, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Jasper, toured that with the architect, with the construction managers and the contractors, I believe either yesterday or Tuesday. They're going to fill those holes, which is not an issue, and cover them up. And then they're going to drill holes at the appropriate distance that would be consistent with CPL's design and that would also be consistent with the USTA recommendation. That work is to be done by Monday and the painting will be, the coloring, painting, striping should be done later next week. And then other than that, we're winding down, you know, kind of, you can see now going on around 100, 200 wing, kind of the cleanup around that. And we are beginning to plan out Phase 4 of the elementary schools, which is the windows, the storefront windows from the inside.
Any questions regarding capital improvement?
So, we're not yet changed in order to cover their...
Correct. No. Nope, that's all on the, that's been repeated several times.
Any other questions regarding capital project? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Moving on to upcoming events, we do have a slate in the agenda. Some things that are coming up that I would like to talk to you guys about. We would like to have a Board Retreat in August at some point. I can only imagine, for most of us, a weekend would more than likely be a better day to be having such a thing. I think right now would really probably be between the 12th and the 19th to be able to do that. The moderators for these functions go fairly, fairly quickly in the summer because just about every school board in the state is probably doing about the same thing we're doing right now. If everybody could kind of look at their calendars and maybe give me a 12th works better, 19th works better, or give it a 1 and 2 to that effect, or I can't do it at all because I'm going to be in Australia for the weekend, whatever the case may be, if you guys could get back to me with what might work best for you so we can get a moderator on Board. We can make a slate of what we would actually like to do and invite anybody else who we'd like to do if we're doing goals and visions and we want to bring in some other stakeholders from the community and school at large. You know, we, we can make that decision and see how we want to move forward with that. You know, even if we did that as like a morning session and then we kind of did an afternoon session more years towards what we wanted to do, it's probably going to be an all-day thing. My experience with these things, all day actually means like six to seven hours, probably not a full eight hours, but it is the full day. We probably do like bagels for breakfast, something for lunch, but if you guys can get back to me with what works for you, I greatly appreciate it.
In the email or just now?
Please do it in writing. If you just tell me, I will 100% forget. My wife says it's my biggest flaw. So the other thing is, just a reminder, Monday, June 5th, we have a special Board of Education meeting in regard to the superintendent evaluation. So we're essentially just going to go directly into executive session to speak to that cause. And just so the public knows, we're not having a meeting for any other business except for that. We do have the Policy Committee meeting prior to. So just make sure you have that on your calendar. I did not change the date on Super Eval. I apologize for that. It did say to have it done by the 31st. I opened that up. I sent a text today. I do apologize for that. That was my mistake. But if everybody could have that done by the 4th, that Sunday, that way we just know that everything's taken care of and we can have that meeting and be productive. Moving on to community events. There's an upcoming car wash that Mrs. Larusso pointed out in her, in her Board Report. And there's a few other items there that were from the Sullivan County Democrat. Janet, any questions or comments from the public?
There's nobody on the list at this time.
Awesome. Would anybody from the public like to talk? Okay. Moving on. Dr. Evans, Superintendent Update and Information.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So as was mentioned earlier, we are in the midst of end-of-the-year celebrations. You heard some of them mentioned before. I do want to call the Board's attention to the High School Graduation Ceremony, which is on Sunday, June 25th. I believe, Ms. Larusso, you're on that committee. Is it 10 a.m.? Is that correct? It's the same time they did it last year, I think, right? And again, the same location, which is behind the middle school here, the Rain venue. It is the High School Auditorium. That would be a ticketed event. And I believe as in years past, Board members will have caps and gowns, correct? And who do they, that's already been ordered? Wendy? Okay. Great. Wonderful. And obviously, there's stuff in upcoming events on your agenda, but also if you look at our website, there's, you know, something really, several things happening every day. So stay tuned with that. In terms of personnel searches, our postings for high school principal, as well as the assistant principals at the elementary and the middle school have been posted. They will remain open until June 15th. We are currently seeking interim appointments for the principal's position to start on July 1st, as well as the assistant principal positions because they oversee the summer school program. So we are actively searching for those. And we have cast our net pretty wide. We're advertising on a number of state associations, as well as EdWeek, which is a national platform for education. I met with our final student roundtables last week, May 24th with the middle school student roundtable and May 25th with the high school student roundtable. Our topic was career planning and I've included those survey responses to the Board. However, that, those sessions were much more anecdotal and a lot more feedback than what that data depicts. Overall, I thought these roundtables were a wonderful venue for me to get better ideas from students on ways to adjust our programs for next year. We also included principals in those meetings so they could hear it firsthand. One adjustment we're looking at for next year is to, for me to put out, like, this came from the middle school students, to put out the survey prompts to, like, the whole school. When the whole school responds, then we still have just that focus group to say, hey, how come 60% of the middle school students said this? And let's talk about that. So the survey would be a little bit broader in scope. It's not a, it'd be an anonymous survey. It'd be a voluntary survey. It'd just be a way of just gathering some feedback in a timely fashion. The August Board of Education Meeting Day, if you recall, last time I shared with you, we need to move up the August 31st Board Meeting. And we're recommending August 22nd. It's a Tuesday night. It would be the normal time in this location, but I am asking the Board to hopefully approve that so we can advertise it in the right places.
What day did you say? I'm sorry.
August 22nd. It's a Tuesday.
Does that work for most everybody?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Janet.
It'll be on the July 7th?
Yeah, when we approve that. But we can change it. It's on the calendar already. Recognition. This morning, I attended the Orange County Interscholastic Athletic Association's Senior Athletic Recognition. And there, the OCIA recognized our seniors Meg Cruz and Urban Ostrich, both for being outstanding senior scholar athletes. They represented us well and congratulations to them. And just a reminder that on June 22nd, the Board of Education will be recognizing staff members who are retiring as of June 30th or who have retired already this school year. That'll be at 5:30 p.m., which will be before our 6:30 executive session starts.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Any questions for Dr. Evans? Our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Lisa Phelan, had a personal obligation that came up abruptly today, so she was unable to make our meeting. Dr. Evans is going to fill the gap.
So the Board will be acting on a, an updated lease agreement with the town of Bethel over its utilization of the Duggan Elementary School. There's all, the Board will also be acting on a fresh bread bid award. And Ms. Phelan has included a memo there. And the bid this year would go to Bimbo Bakeries. And also, there's another bid award for the solid waste removal. And with this being ordered, the Thompson Sanitation.
Any questions regarding the Assistant Superintendent for Business update? We're good? Mr. Groden?
Just looking forward to the time when we were going to be able to make our own bread and not need them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Groden. Rotary, infection oven, I'm sure is not far away. Yes?
I have a question. So in here, it says DCMO Bowsey Garbage Bid. Are we going with that or are we going with Thompson? Was it Thompson? Yeah. I'm sorry.
DCMO looks like it was for roll-off containers for the Chase School. And they probably have to bid through the Bowseys. Bid through the Bowseys. Any other questions regarding the Assistant Superintendent for Business update? Okey-dokey. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Carter.
Good evening. The only thing I have tonight is the consulting firm, Fred Cardinal, that you had some questions about at the last Board Meeting, as well as the contract did not have the total amount in it. So that has all been updated. Plus, there has been information attached about the consultant and some of her previous work. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that is all I have for tonight.
Any questions regarding such?
I have a question. How come in the contract, you said Exhibit A instead of putting the cost in the contract? So...
That's a standard contract that is, the district has created, and that's basically how it's set up to, to see Exhibit A.
Yeah, so we, through our law firm, a little over a year ago now, we established kind of a base template for contracting. And we try to use that in as much as possible, depending on, obviously, what the vendor comes back with. So very often, you'll see something like that or just, you know, see the attached payment schedule or timeline or whatever the case may be.
I've never seen one of those with Lisa before.
They, they have. Mrs. Riley?
Is it grant-funded? I believe you said before it was grant-funded. And then it's for the $15,000? And that's for three days, for six to seven hours each day? And it's training for teachers or administrators?
No, it's for administrative. It's not training. It is conversation and interviews initially around data practices in each one of the buildings. And then that information is going to be compiled by the consultant. So that money is for work outside of those three days. She's going to, she's going to mine all of the information she gets from the interviews and then she's going to come back to us with recommendations about our data and some solid data plans and then present that to all of the administration and have that back-and-forth feedback. She then, after that, will be available for additional coaching if we need her to through the end of the summer around our data plan. So it's more than just the three days.
And how does that interwork with the strategic plan with the DCIP?
So a strategic plan and DCIP are two completely different plans. This is really more around our school in need of improvement plan that both Chase and Rutherford have to submit to you as a board and to the state. One of the big pieces that the state is pushing is they feel that if you have data-driven instruction and you're using data appropriately, you're more likely to have success on your accountability and how your students are doing. So when you're a school in need of support, you're looking to see that you are including a plan for data and how you're going to use data around your instruction. When you're assessing students, what are you going to do with that data to better instruct your students so that we can show the state that we are no longer a school in need of support because we've done all these things to better instruct our students?
So then that's not based upon the standardized testing then? The state's not looking at standardized testing to see where we lie with...
That's one accountability measure? Yep. Chronic absenteeism is another one. I mean, there's different measures that the state looks at to decide whether or not you are a school in need of support.
This is really getting, raising principals' awareness and practices. And so you get all these results, how do you use that data to make changes and get students in the programs that they need to be?
We're just going to have to be a yearly thing?
Well, it depends on, as far as the data goes, our data practices need to be strengthened forever. Well, it depends on, as far as the data goes, our data practices need to be strengthened forever. How we do that, whether it's through consulting, through additional professional development, I'm working with our principals, that's gonna be an ongoing process. The actual plan that we have to submit to the state is a yearly accountability measure. So depending on, for example, the middle school last year was identified as a school in need of support. They have now, as of this year, no longer been identified. My guess is it's gonna take a couple of years. That will probably be on that list, just based on why we're on that list. So every year, we're gonna have to do a plan. And every year, we'll get additional funding to support that plan.
But that funding is like a one-year first of money? So it's difficult to really use that in long-term, for long-term purposes?
Do you mind giving an example of how that would apply to either social studies or math or in some kind of context so I could wrap my head around what do you mean by gathering data and using it?
So, okay, so let's talk about math. And I'm not a math specialist, so I may speak out of term. But 3-8 math, we may be looking at the assessment data of a math, of a student in third grade and looking to see where they are, based on their assessment, not proficient or not able to complete the facts of the math problem or the math concept based on the curriculum for third grade. So we're gonna take that score and we're gonna dive a little deeper and see why maybe they're not proficient. Are they not good at multiplication? Are they not good at addition? And then we're gonna use that information to reteach them how to do addition, how to do multiplication, reassess them to see if they now have that concept. If they don't, we're gonna dig deep again and see why don't they have that concept? And you just keep doing that until you finally get to the point where they are proficient. That's just one example for one student. Where now we're doing that for all of our students.
Is it like looking stars, like the NWBA's or something?
That's one measure. That's one type of assessment that informs us as to how students are doing. That's given three times a year. There's many other assessments that we look at. Or something as simple as a formative assessment where you're looking over a student's shoulder to see how they're calculating a math problem. So there's lots of pieces that go into that, and that's all of that data.
You know, Red Cardinal doesn't bring their own assessments. It's not, they're gonna take existing data that, you know, assessments that we already use, use that data to meet with the principals and talk about ways to better utilize it. So there's no new testing with this.
It might be something as simple as how do teachers get the information they need to work inside their classrooms on improving their instruction? So, you know, do they meet in groups? Do all the third-grade teachers meet together and look at all of that assessment data? And they together say, okay, all of my third graders did really well on this concept, but yours did not. Do you teach it this way? Maybe that's, you know, maybe we need to talk about how we teach our kids. And I, my kids did really well, so I'm gonna help you teach this concept. And then they model for each other. So that's, that's using data and having conversations to try and get better at teaching our kids.
That would be during, for teachers during, say, like a superintendent day, where they have time to collaborate with that goal?
Potentially, but we're, we're recognizing that teachers need daily time to collaborate as much as possible. So when you look at your schedule, you're gonna try and make their periods that they can plan together at the same time. And then use that time together to have those conversations. That's an example.
Any other questions regarding that contract? Very well. Moving on to action items. Mrs. Jersey?
I'd make a motion we take action items T1 through T13 as a group.
Mr. Groden has a second. Any discussions? All in favor? So ordered.
Mrs. Jersey? I'd make a motion that we accept action items T1 through T13.
Seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, everybody. Closing of meeting, correspondence. None downloaded at this time. Janet, did anyone sign up to talk to us? Nobody? Okay. No, Mr. Groden. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Made by Mrs. Larusso, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, everybody. If you guys would like to sign your papers and go home, anybody, any Board member can sign your papers.